This regular business meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. Just wanted to extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. I know there are many, like five, maybe six. But the board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is a responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I ask that you please turn your cell phones to silent alert if you have not done so already. And we just appreciate the time you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Was it Lena? Lena, has anyone signed up for comment? Comment for guest? Okay. Great. Well, then, upon that, the Waco ISD Board of Trustees will go into closed session at this time pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, on items 551.071, 551.074, and 551.076. Okay? Thank you. At this time, the board will reconvene in open session. Please pause with me as we take a time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. Special recognition? Nope, so sorry. We will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have some special guests with us today. If you want to come up here. Ready? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam President and trustees. Tonight, we have two special guests with us tonight for special recognitions for the pledge. Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance during the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of June, we have two students from Parkdale Elementary School, Chloe Shaw and Charlie Shaw. Chloe is going to the sixth grade. She has just completed her stay at Parkdale Elementary, and her favorite subject is math. She loves to read and make bracelets. And Charlie is going into the second grade. Her favorite subject is art and PE, and she's also a very curious and spunky student. Thank you to Carla. I'd like to thank Carla Shaw for sharing her amazing daughter with us tonight, and thank you to Principal Ortiz for being here tonight as well. Next, we have our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students within Waco ISD for an outstanding community partner. The recognition celebrates the theme for the 2021-2022 school year, "We Are Waco ISD", and acknowledges that it's not just our employees and students who make Waco ISD a community great, that's a great place to teach and learn. In June, we are honoring Art Center Waco. Art Center Waco couldn't be here with us tonight, but we still want to recognize them. Their core values include lifelong learning and collaboration, diversity and inclusion, and community engagement and accessibility. These core values are exhibited in their partnership with Waco ISD as they provide students and families an opportunity to enjoy and learn about art. Art Center Waco's mobile art gallery, Art Expedition, has visited each elementary school this past year, as they have for several years, and they provide students with a fine art gallery experience using curriculum tied to third and fourth-grade Texas essential knowledge and skills. Art Center Waco hosted students from J.H. Hines Elementary, Indian Springs Middle School, and Carver Middle for a visit at the Kermit Oliver exhibit. This visit afforded students the chance to learn about this world-famous artist who resides right in their backyard. Art Center Waco hosted a winter principals' meeting, which included a visit to the Kermit Oliver exhibit and the use of their art classroom, and they provided the space to display the end-of-the-year Best of WISD Art Exhibit in the Hulse Gallery. This art show helped Waco ISD to remain a district of distinction for the third year by fulfilling that specific requirement. We'd like to thank Art Center Waco. That concludes our special recognitions for tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, just, I think Art Center Waco, we're just so thankful for their partnership, collaboration, and their display of some of our students' work and just all that they've done within our community partnership, that they have really, really thankful for that. At this point, we'll go to superintendent's report.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I want to talk about preliminary STAR results first this evening, and we're going to put some projections on the screen, and each of you, board members, have a copy in front of you. So since our last board meeting in May, we have received our preliminary results of the Spring STAR testing, and I'll tell you that TEA just sent out an email this afternoon stating that they would not be releasing those, those results, to parents as planned tomorrow. So we're not quite sure what's going on with that, but I'm going to proceed this evening because we have an opportunity to come back again next month and tell you if there were any changes or not. So I'm going to tell you what I know today. Since we got the results, our campus and district staff have been reviewing and verifying the results and making projections for accountability ratings, and I'm excited to share our projections with you this evening, and I hope that you will be as pleased as I am to see the number of campuses who have increased their accountability ratings from 2019 to now. The Spring of 2019, as you know, represents the last year that campuses were rated, and that was just prior to the pandemic. Before we discuss the results, I want to say thank you to Denise Bell, and I'm going to ask her to come up because she really is the expert, and just assist me this evening. So if you have some questions or we want to talk in depth about anything, Denise really is the one who's been working the data for us. She's put in hours and hours analyzing our data over the last few weeks. She's worked very hard, and I'm truly grateful for her. She didn't just analyze our results, though, after they came in, but she's also spent an incredible amount of time working with our campuses throughout the school year to ensure that each campus understood how to use formative and interim student achievement data to guide instruction and to develop a strategic approach for improvement at each campus. As Denise met with our principals and campus teams, she asked them to set two goals. The first goal was to return to or exceed their 2019 overall score. The second goal was to set specific goals to increase the campus rating one letter grade from 2019 performance overall and one letter grade in each of the three accountability domains. So tonight, I am pleased to announce that 13 of 16 campuses improved their overall score from 2019, and 10 of 16 campuses improved their campus ratings by at least one letter grade. Now, that does not include Transformation Waco campuses, and I also do not have a projection for Brazos High School tonight. Brazos is under an alternative accountability system, and we need more time to make their projections, so we'll report that to you at the next board meeting. Their scores and graduation rates are calculated differently from traditional high schools, and we just need some more time to verify the data. This year, our campuses earned seven Bs, six Cs, and three Ds. As you can see, that's a significant improvement over 2019, when the district had three Ds and four Fs, not including Transformation Waco. I want to point out that I have included Transformation Waco results on the one-pager that you have in front of you so that you can see their results as well, and I would note that for both Waco ISD and Transformation Waco, these results are our best projections. Denise's work to make the projections for Waco ISD campuses and Transformation Waco has provided us with their projections. In both cases, these are not official results. Scores will not be final until July 14th, and official accountability ratings will not be released to the public until August 14th. So there may be some changes, and we don't know what happened this afternoon with TEA. Campuses who receive a score of less than 70 will be labeled as not rated when TEA releases the results, and that will not be the case for next year, as that was a COVID provision for this year that was enacted by the state legislature. Finally, I would like to point out that the scores that you see are not an indicator of the percentage of students passing STAR. That number that you see, for instance, Bell's Hill, is an 89. That is a combination of three scores, which are based on a set of very complicated calculations from three different domains being measured by the state. Domain one, student achievement; domain two, school progress; and domain three, closing the gaps. So at next month's meeting, Denise will confirm where we think we are with accountability ratings, and she will walk you through those three domains and our ratings in more detail. The state accountability system judges schools on the better of domain one or domain two, achievement or progress, and this year, we asked our campuses to focus on progress or student growth. And with one or two possible exceptions for all of our schools, growth is what will count for this year's accountability ratings. I want to thank our teachers and our principals for their hard work this year. These results show that our kids are growing academically, and the strength of our instructional program is also growing. I also want to thank Dr. Cornblum and her team in curriculum and instruction for the excellent work that they did with data-driven instruction and action coaching, as well as some key strategic moves to ensure strong interventions are in place for our students. They've stayed focused in the midst of the pandemic, and they've done some really outstanding work. We attribute these results to that work. To realize growth, you have to identify what each student needs. That's where data-driven instruction comes in. The data gives teachers an understanding of the specific concepts that individual students in their classrooms haven't yet mastered. Where action coaching comes in is in improving how we teach those concepts. It's a cycle where teachers review the data, and then campus leaders coach teachers on how to improve instruction around specific topics. To support campus leaders, district leaders have been coaching campus leaders to be better coaches. It's all one system that exists to meet students where they are and help them grow. Interventions, then, further complement this work. When the data indicates that a student needs more intensive support than a teacher can provide, in a classroom, an interventionist is able to provide one-on-one or small-group instruction targeted to their needs. And as you will recall, we reallocated some existing resources and used federal stimulus funding to ensure that we had at least two interventionists at each campus and more at some of our larger campuses. So next month, you will see campus scores for domain one and domain two. They will show the progress that we've made, and they will show you that we still have work to do. I am proud of our increased campus ratings, but I'm even more proud of our students' growth this year and the focused work of our educators who made it possible. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the data that you have in front of you. If I can't, Denise will help me.
Madam President, I think my only question would be, do we expect these numbers to make any drastic changes by next month, or is this really a pretty solid account of what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'd like to take that. So, and then you can add to it if you'd like, Denise. Yes, we have a couple of campuses that are on the border that we think could push higher. For instance, Bell's Hill, we're watching every single test that was taken, and we think when the results come in, we might get that 90, but we didn't want to overinflate those ratings. There's another one, West Avenue. Was that the other one? Was another one that we think might could push up? And that might be all that I'm for certain about. Denise, do you have anything to add there?
No, I think those are the two that we've been watching because the domain three gets complicated with the subpops, so we want to double-check and be sure.
Thank you.
I have a question. In the July meeting, are we going to do a comparison, kind of more of the longitudinal, from where the students came in from COVID, kind of their grade level, and then kind of what we've seen, so we can kind of...
Yes, we've had an amazing amount of growth, and TEA measures growth with two measures, expected and accelerated, and so I always tell teachers it's growth towards grade level because the STAR test is grade level. It's flat. You have to perform towards it. So I'll share with you where, you know, with all these kids who grew, what category were they in, you know? And then what percentage of accelerated did the campuses get accelerated? Because that's two years' worth of growth towards grade level, and we had quite a bit of accelerated.
That's awesome. That's great. I see these, and I almost am like, it kind of gets me a little emotional because I know the work that this takes to see these type of scores, and then I think about COVID and where, what I'm remembering from our board meeting and where our kids were beginning of this school year. I mean, I look at this, and I have one word, and that is bravo. That's for our teachers, our campus administrators, downtown. I would even say every, these scores to me, I know we have work to go, but these scores to me said that everyone was pulling in the same direction. And it also means this ship is pointed in the right direction, and we're starting to gain momentum. And so I am really excited. You know, I'm excited about the July scores, but it makes me even more excited for this next school year because I know, I mean, we've all heard the stories of teachers, you know, saying, you know, how are we going to do this? Two, three years' growth in one year, and this is showing that they did it. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you, teachers. Thank you, thank you, thank you, administrators. Thank you, downtown, I mean, Kim Cannon, you guys, this was hard, hard work, but you kept your focus and your vision for student achievement, and this is showing it. So thank you so much. Again, I know there's more work to be done, but let's celebrate.
There's more work to be done. We are celebrating, yes.
Let's celebrate, yes.
We have some more growing to do, but we're very pleased with the results of our campuses and how many kids did grow this year, and we're just excited and thankful.
Seven years of being on the school board, we've never not had an F campus, so this is pretty huge.
Any other questions?
Okay. And do you want to clarify what the email was from TEA?
So TEA sent out emails today because the parent portal was supposed to be open, and we have been sent files that have individual reports that can be printed out and sent to parents or sent electronically to parents. And at first, TEA said that they were holding off on release to the parent portal, which I got, I entertained a lot of phone calls today about, where's my kid's score? Because it wouldn't even let them in to see the old scores. It locked everybody out of the parent portal. So TEA released a statement saying that they, due to the pandemic, they want to do more due diligence and analyze the test results. I don't really know what that means, but they told us the parent portal will be turned on next week sometime, and they told us to hold off on sending reports home to parents. I'm not sure, but we'll certainly let you know.
Let's hope it's good news, then.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. Budget cut updates. Last month, I told you about our goal to reduce costs by $5 million in next year's budget, and I outlined the areas in which we would be cutting. As of now, I'm reporting that all of the employees affected by those cuts have been notified. I told you that we would eliminate at least $1 million from the administration building and centralized support. At this time, we have eliminated 17 positions, of which five were already vacant, and additional contracted services, reducing the budget by 1.29 million. A total of 20 teaching positions have been closed, reducing the budget by 1.24 million. And as you will recall, those are vacant teaching positions that were not filled due to a loss of enrollment. So closing those positions will not result in increases in class sizes or the elimination of any programs for our students. Dr. Lopez has met individually with nearly all first and second-grade literacy aides and library aides to discuss reassignments. He has a few more left to meet with. All but a handful have been reassigned to other available positions within the district, and we'll continue to work on that throughout the summer. That change will reduce the budget by 1.56 million. Finally, we are reducing administrative staffing at our secondary campuses. Dean's position was eliminated at both Caesar Chavez and at Tennyson Middle School. The number of assistant principals at University was reduced by one, and the number of counselors at Waco High was reduced by one. Those changes reduced the budget by approximately $500,000. So total, that's about 4.59 million, and we're still working to identify additional savings in other non-payroll areas of the budget, and Ms. Davis will give you a full report on that next month at our budget meeting. Any questions about that? Say that again?
August.
August. August. Thank you, Cheryl. All right. Any questions about budget cuts? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kim Cannon. I have not been told about any items needing to be pulled from a consent. Anyone want to push or anything? Okay. If there are no items to be pulled, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented. Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. It passes unanimously. Dr. Kim Cannon, I did want to say a huge thank you to your administration because when I was reading through the consent agenda, I noticed we had a large sum of money that was going to emergent bilingual intervention resources and bilingual tutors. And I don't think I've ever seen bilingual tutors in our budget, and I'm just, I'm so thankful for that. That is going to massively help our emergent bilingual students, and it is, it's just huge. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. That's Title III federal title programs through ESA.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. That's a long way towards language equity, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll go on to item nine, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding guaranteed maximum price for Carver. Ms. Pereira.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kim Cannon, trustees. Well, we're here before you this evening to present the final GMP for Carver Middle School, and because it is the final, sort of the, you know, the accomplishment, Doug with O'Connell Robertson is going to give you a presentation and just kind of recap and let you know where we are.
Good evening. All right. We are, as you mentioned here, the final GMP, so very exciting, and thank you all for the time here to talk about the last one for Carver Middle School. So I'll just take a few minutes just to recap the process and how we got here and where we're at in the schedule and kind of what some of these next steps are. So some of y'all might recognize the plan for the new GW Carver Middle School. Again, we are reconstructing GW Carver in its entirety on the same site, and so this is JJ Flouellen down at the bottom of the image there, and just kind of showing again what that site plan is for the new middle school. I won't dive into all the details that we've covered in the past, but just a reminder that it is a comprehensive new middle school campus with a full eight-lane track and athletic field, as well as all the site amenities you see there. We've got dedicated bus loop. We've got staff parking there and visitor parking at the front, and outdoor amenities that we've discussed through the design process. And as we talk about where we're at in the design process, we're actually done, for all intents and purposes. As we've wrapped up the contract documents, we've issued those to the contractor, and now that's why we're here, reviewing the GMP, the last GMP for this project. So just because the contract documents are done doesn't mean that our work is done. We're continuing to work with Gloria and her team, as well as Core Construction, the construction manager, looking at opportunities for, you know, cost savings still. You know, we're still pushing forward on those items and, you know, seeing what we can do to react to the market as it continues to change and be challenging. But as far as the design goes, we have concluded the regular design phase, and we're really pushing forward into construction. And so just a reminder of what the vision is for Carver and the exciting new building that's going to show up on that site pretty soon. And so just a recap of the schedule, we already are in construction. You've probably driven by the site and seen a lot of the progress that has taken place, but the building is demolished, and the site work is underway, and so you'll see a lot of dirt out there right now. But you'll see on June 27th noted there as a building construction start, that is basically the notice to proceed after the GMP three is approved. And then you'll see almost exactly a year from today is the planned substantial completion for the new building. So a year from now, a brand-new building will be sitting where there's nothing there now. So really excited to see how that's going forward. And so some images you're probably familiar with as far as when demolition was occurring, and then they cleared the site and started doing some of the site work. Just a quick little update on some of that construction progress. We had a wonderful groundbreaking event with the district and the community, so super exciting. We managed to not, you know, get into the 100-degree days, I think, before that occurred, so we were lucky there. But yeah, very exciting to see the construction progress to date. And really, you know, just wanted to circle back to the GW Carver mission, and again, as we've continued through this design process and gone through the subsequent GMPs, you know, really keeping this project mission at the core of our process, and that's really allowed us to work collaboratively with Gloria and her team, as well as Core, in developing both a design and a project schedule and a budget. You'll see there at the bottom our target hard cost of 63 million, and really excited to report that between all three GMPs, we're coming in right on target with that, on time, you know, with the schedule, and even able to actually accept seven alternates that were listed as add alternates to the project. So the seven that you see there listed are additional items that we're able to actually accept as a result of the hard work that Core and Gloria and her team and us collaborating and really, you know, finding those right moves to save here and there and really, you know, be able to select the things we know are going to impact students and staff to support their day-to-day use. So again, we're really excited that we're here, and the project is on time, and it's in budget, so we're looking forward to it.
I just wanted to add a couple things. Thank you very much, Doug. I just wanted to add a couple things that have been important to this board all along, and that is local involvement. And as of today, as GMP number three, the local involvement is over 21.5 million in local contractors, which is about 44% of the cost of work. So that's a really great accomplishment, and the community is benefiting and building their businesses with this program as well. It's benefiting the district. with this program as well. It's benefiting the district. So that's all we have. If there are any questions?
I just have a comment. I just want to say thanks for all your hard work. It's seeing, I mean, knowing what kind of budget you're coming in with and coming under it, it's a really, just thank you. We appreciate all your hard work. We know it's not easy, especially with what's going on economically and globally. But yeah, we're very proud and very excited for your work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other discussion? Okay, great. At this point, I will entertain a motion.
It's a move.
Keith, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Angelo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So it passes unanimously. Ms. Barera, thank you so much for all your work. Appreciate it. Okay. We'll move on to item 10, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding award of contract for Tennyson Portables. Ms. Barera, you're up again.
Okay. Well, in the last board meeting, seems like every board meeting since May, we've been doing things for Tennyson. So I guess since April. So in order to be able to do the construction of the Tennyson Middle School in one phase and to use a very competitive delivery method, we, that's why we're doing this upfront work. So the first part was to buy the portables. What you have in front of you today, this work is to provide the infrastructure to support the portables and make sure that, and also demolition of the science wing. So that all needs to be done by August 12 of this year. So it's a, it's quite a lift. Proposals were issued by the district on May 6. We received two proposals, and we're recommending that, to award the contract to Mazonic Construction. And that is for, like I said, it's a, it's part of the bond, and it's to support the construction of Tennyson Middle School. Yeah, they're a local contractor, too.
Are there any questions?
We also have a document bid tab that we added on your places this evening, so you can see both of the bids that came in for the project. Mazonic was the low bidder. Is that correct?
They were the low bidder on the base price. And what was interesting about this one is that they provided a voluntary alternate, because they said that the equipment that we had specified for the electrical infrastructure, they would not be able to get it in time. So they actually created an alternative design, and we asked O'Connell Robertson to review it, and they reviewed it. And with this alternative design, they say that we can make the time that we have to have it done by August 12. So that's a little bit of an interesting twist there.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Davis?
So the other company, could they not do that same deal? Would they not be able to get it done by August 12?
It's, they could have made, had that initiative to show us that alternate or to let us know about the unavailability of that particular equipment, but they did not at the time of the bid.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
It's a move.
Okay. Mr. Gillery?
Second.
Mr. Davis, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Decision passes unanimously. Moving on to number, item 11. This is me. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding designation of a delegate and alternate for the 2022 Texas Association of School Board TASB Delegate Assembly. The TASB Delegate Assembly happens every fall. It is an assembly comprised of trustees from throughout the state. So we usually meet together. It happens during our annual TASB convention. We meet together. We kind of listen to current legislation, debate, discuss, and vote accordingly. So currently, I am that delegate, and I believe I can stay that delegate, or if there's someone who wishes to take that position, they are more than, more than happy to give that up or remain.
So the things that are discussed, do we discuss it as a group before? Like, is the delegate going as a representative for our board, or are they?
That's a great question. It is, the things that are discussed are kind of more on the state level, so you kind of bring your district perspective to it. So kind of your constituents, your students with that in mind. So it's not, we might have heard of some updated legislation or things that are being discussed, but it wouldn't have been really presented to us. So it's kind of little, yeah, legislative priorities, what they want, what we want, TASB to kind of go out. Yeah.
I think that would be, I don't have a problem with it staying the same. I just think when that time comes, it would be good for us to have a discussion on what those items for discussion would be, so that we can all give opinions to you, so you can take kind of a group perspective.
Yeah, I can, I could definitely try to contact our representative, our regional representative, and see if she can, if she has those items beforehand, and I could give those out to you. That'd be great. Does anyone want to be an alternate in case I cannot be there? Jose, thank you. Okay, great. So I'll just, it'll remain as is. I will be the delegate, and then Jose will be the alternate in case, if I can't make it. So it is actually very informative. And do I need to take a, an action item? Can I motion on my own? Okay. So I move that I would remain the delegate authority, and Jose would be the alternate.
It's a move.
Great. Great. Everyone in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. There we go. It's Jose and me holding down the fort. Announcements.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to take this opportunity to remind our families that online registration for the 2022-2023 school year is open now. We've had thousands of our families register for next year already, and we encourage any of our families who haven't taken the opportunity to do that yet to go visit wacoisd.org, click on the big banner on the homepage and get started. We'll also have dedicated times for in-person registration at all of our campuses in the second half of July. Thank you.
Okay. Well, seeing as it is 7:40, and I'm more than sure people want to go home, we are adjourned.